I'm going to call to order the meeting of the Town of Halifax Planning Board for July 20, 2023. I also need to announce that we are being videotaped by Area 58 Community Access Television, which will be available to everybody on YouTube. I'm going to introduce the members present. To my left is Burke Gainer, to my right is Amy Trup, and myself, Tom Millius. We do have forum this evening with three members. We have two members that are not currently present. I'm not sure if one of them is coming or not, but we do have enough to conduct business. We are located in the Selectman's Meeting Room here in the Town of Halifax at 499 Plymouth I'm going to ask if anyone on the board has anything they want to add to the agenda that came up suddenly within the 48 hours?
I don't.
Do what?
If not, can I have a motion to accept the agenda for this evening?
I'll make a motion to accept the agenda.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded to accept the agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Our first order of business this evening is a continued hearing for 359 Plymouth Street, a site plan review for Contractor Storage presented by Grady Consulting and Gabriel... I'm sorry, Gabriel, I don't see your last name here and I forgot it.
Padilla.
Okay, which he said. We'll be presenting for Grady Construction.
Good afternoon, everyone. I have some sheets here to pass around. Thank you. So last week, we went out to the site and we located the trees in question, which are highlighted in red in the drawing that happened to be provided. The owner and as we looked at alternatives, however, the trees themselves are located in pretty critical areas in the design.
They're right inside the basin here, right?
Pretty much, yes. They all landed inside the basin. So as a matter of offsetting that, we have specified in the plan eight to 10-foot highs evergreens along the berm that will offset the loss of the coverage in that area. So there's proper screening from the residence back.
How high are they, eight to 10 feet?
Eight to 10 feet. Yep. They're evergreens, so keep going.
Just for clarification for the record, all the subject trees are on the subject property.
That is correct.
And none of the three can be saved?
We looked at alternatives, trying to shift things around, but it wouldn't take a total redesign of the site.
Right.
And also, this has been under review by Conservation Commission, so it would have been a redesign on both facts. So it was just unfeasible for the client at this point.
Where are you with Conservation?
They are waiting for us to close here on Planning Board, and then we'll continue on with them. We have some here we've contacted that came back, and hopefully closed. We go ahead with those, and I believe we have a hearing next month.
Do you have any waivers from their bylaws?
I am not 100% sure on that.
Sorry, Burke. Would the evergreens on the previous site or plans, or have they added the eight to 10-foot ones?
What we added was the sides.
Of the side?
Originally, they were lower shrubs.
Yep.
So with this conversations back and forth, we agreed on having larger trees.
Okay, thank you. Other than that, there were no other changes to these?
No, there were no other changes in the plan.
Just direct it to the board, okay? Please.
Yes. So, please sign. None of the trees, although you came and she was supposed to notify me.
Phyllis, you need to really direct it to us. I'm sorry.
So they were supposed to notify me, but, and I had marked the trees. It looks like these are outside of where these two, at least these two 50-foot trees are outside of where they're going to put their 10-foot trees. Is that correct?
Seems to look that way.
I'm seeing one tree that might be outside the retention area. Well, no, there is two trees. There's one over to the right-hand side.
It's still outside of the detention basin.
But it's in the spirit.
However, it's within the berm of the basin.
Yeah.
So it's still an element of the detention basin.
So when you look at the street from my property, okay, at least 10 feet up is where the street level is. So you can see the cars going right under like 10 feet up. So there's just, I don't understand the berm. So you're going to flatten everything out and put 10-foot trees on top of the berm?
Yes.
There's no way you can save at least these two trees?
We looked at all the possibilities here, but the location of those is at a critical location. Because it's not only the berm itself, but the swale that is behind the berm.
Just direct it to us.
But the berm that is behind the detention basin, which redirects the runoff that goes through that those back progress. So we have two critical issues there.
Could you just confirm for me, the elevation on the street appears to be, is it 65 or 68?
I have a 69 at the entrance, and I have 68 further down.
And the elevation just off your property in the rear?
Where the shed is located, that's a 65. Right behind where the swale starts is at 66.
Okay, so a couple of feet basically from the center line of the road, huh?
And that's all within the 100-foot of the wetlands, correct?
Yes, yes. The basin itself is within the 100-foot.
But the trees coming down, have you even talked about that with Conservation?
I don't believe that has come up yet. There's only one tree that would be within that area?
Well, they are within the 100.
It would be the deciduous in the corner right next to the shed, that's the only one within the buffer zone.
But typically CONCON will let you work within 50 feet in this town?
Not let you work within 50, but...
You have to file within 100, but they can impose in no-touch zone the 50-foot mark.
Right, but these are in the 100?
Yeah, I understand, so I...
So that has to go to Conservation?
Yeah, anything within the 100 has to go to Conservation.
Oh yeah, this is under Conservation.
But those trees coming down?
No, not yet. We haven't gotten to that point with Conservation yet.
Yeah, that would have to go there.
Oh yes, at least that first deciduous tree, because the 100-foot line straddles pretty much the edge of the pavement.
Yeah, you can see it.
The edge. So it's only one tree that's within the 100-foot buffer.
Well, clearly the two trees inside the retention area, I don't see what you can do with those.
We can't even say that they can come down because they have to ask Conservation.
No, no, I understand, but I mean, I...
No, 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 I know you're not saying that. I'm just stating that that needs to be done.
Yeah, well, I'm assuming that Conservation's going to review it. I'm just looking at it from a design perspective. Doesn't leave you too much of, oh, too many options if that's where it's going to go. And moving to the right, you're going to go into the conservancy area further, so that becomes problematic.
Is that something that can be redesigned? I'm only asking because...
The question has to go through the board.
Yeah, yeah, just direct it to us, please.
I'm only asking because, I'm not saying people aren't complying, but my neighbor, Phyllis, they said for the last three months, they're going to talk to her and go over this review this with her. At the last meeting, Phyllis gave her phone number. At the meeting, nobody contacted her yet. So when they said they went to the site, between the last meeting and now, they still never contacted those.
Wait, can I ask when?
Just ask us, okay, then we'll get the answer.
When did you actually come after looking at these trees?
Friday.
Last Friday. I was hoping Friday. I didn't see it. Spend most of the time, like when am I Friday?
I don't recall the time. I wasn't there. We had to go out there with equipment.
I think one of the issues here is the Planning Board tries to accommodate everybody's particular concerns. At some point, we can't necessarily control the design completely as long as it complies with all the regulations in place. I think that trying to work with the abutters, if contact wasn't made, I think that's unfortunate.
They're called twice.
I think that's, it isn't required, but it is a nice gesture to at least communicate with people. CONCON's going to have a lot of input in this. I don't know how the rest of the board feels. I don't believe we can require a redesign. We can ask questions. We can try to accommodate as much as we can possibly accommodate. Sorry. Is there anything else that you think you could do to be more accommodating, when we put it that way?
We looked at the possibilities here. We looked into extending the basin to cut off a little bit of the areas where we're filling, but we just don't have enough room.
It is kind of a small site. I mean, all things considered, it's a small site in relation to the fact that wetlands also become an issue in the context.
Wetlands becomes an issue with when we start moving around the basin, only because basin is completely within the Conservation Commission jurisdiction. So all these changes will go through the Conservation Commission.
I'm not comfortable approving a site plan at all unless Conservation understands all of these things and has approved them. But to me, because then, say we give the approval, you go to Conservation and change certain things like the trees. We don't know if they are allowed or not allowed to come down, so quite frankly, I'm not for voting on any of this before Conservation makes all of their determinations.
Would you appoint me with them?
I would have to check my calendar. I believe it's August 1st.
I think Ms. Trup has a valid point here. I've worked with a lot of boards over a lot of years, and many times there's a conflict, and one board doesn't want to see it until another board's seen it, and that board says, "No, we want to see it after that board sees it," and it goes back and forth. But I think in this particular instance, I think I'd be more comfortable myself after a review by the Conservation Commission, because if in fact they change something, then you've got to come back for, you know, another review or alteration of the original. Personally, I think, based on the amount of time I've looked at these plans, I don't see how you can come up with too much difference, if anything. I think CONCON would be the appropriate place to go next, and I would propose that we wait for a Conservation Commission review, but we're going to need an extension if that's the case, because I believe the covered extension expires August 1st.
July 25th.
Excuse me?
July 25th.
July 25th, okay. The dates were a little confusing.
Yep, somewhere right there, but...
Has it been the practice of the board to prove something contingent upon, or you'd rather not go down that road?
Personally, I would not want to go down that road. I would rather get the feedback, because if they have to make some alterations to satisfy CONCON, and then we know this is it, this is all they can do.
And as I previously mentioned at previous meetings, I think the applicant has really gone out of their way and worked, you know, with the town and the concerns about the appearance of the building, the outside, what it was doing. I actually thought there was a bigger drop-off on the rear of the property, but really, it's only about two feet, because I was going to ask that instead of eight to 10-foot abreviated, put 10-foot, and, you know, but actually, for two feet, you know, they are going to... I mean, we had another previous thing where they informed us that abreviated grow like crazy, you know, like for the year, something crazy like that. So I think they've addressed the traffic issue, the visual issue, the appearance of the building. They appreciate your efforts, told that to the owner, the applicant. But yeah, I think, like you both said, you know, it comes down to a critical thing whether or not Conservation will do its, approve it. So yes, I would suggest the same thing, or I'd agree with the same thing, you know, if you wanted to get an extension on it and hear back.
And then wait for the Conservation Commission? You dig what that is?
I am, but I'd also like to add a couple of things. Number one, I look at the abrevieties, and they're being planted in the swale. So a couple of trees can't stay up even though they're in the swale, but abrevieties are going to be planted in the swale.
Are they in the swale?
No, they're on the berm.
They're on the berm.
Yeah, I thought they were on the berm.
They're on the berm. And we can't leave those trees because we're filling...
You see what I mean?
If the tree were to stay there, at least the one that is on the swale, we're filling that area.
It wouldn't be able to make it die, and that's not good.
And that's one thing. And then I will also state that they've received a special permit for use, and that they are not allowed to vary, we're not allowed to vary them on anything else with a special permit.
They have to stay inside their special permit, but there's another reason for having them under Conservation. And like I said, it's always a judgment call where to go first in most cases. I'm going to assume where this operation is a quote-unquote landscaping concern, that they will take care of their own site, I would think. That's taking a leap of faith there, but again, I understand your concerns. Personally, if you want to make a motion in any way you want to make it, at the end of the day, I'd like to put this off until we get some feedback from the Conservation.
Yes, and also the other thing is, is that the updated stormwater management and site plan have to be reviewed by PGB.
I was going to ask that question. I'm glad you brought it up.
It was discussed at the last meeting. I wanted to know if they were kind of...
We have the report.
It's not the correct report. Has not been reviewed.
Oh yeah, since you need a copy of it, it's like 278 pages or something, yeah.
But the updated report has not been reviewed by PGB.
Yeah, we need to get that reviewed, because I don't believe it's gone to the review engineer to do the calculations.
I sent it over pretty much a couple of days after that, last year.
To the review engineer?
To the board.
Okay, I don't know if it got sent to the review.
The review engineer reviewed, and it's on his letter, the November 9th Stormwater Management, not June 14th. So he asked to review that.
So the board will communicate with him to see if he in fact has looked at the most recent calculations.
Yeah, his letter states, the November 9th.
That's the last letter we have. We don't know that he did or didn't do something since then.
Do you need me to resend it again? Because, do I send it directly to the...
No, we have it.
We have it. It's sitting in the folder back here. I took the, I did not read it.
How do we handle tonight then, the letter of extension? Send it with him or send it off to the applicant, because we're kind of dead in the water without that.
Yeah.
I think we should make a motion for our 60-day extension to not have to run into a 30.
Right.
And I think that we need a 60-day extension, or we need to...
Let's extend it to when that meeting would be, so we don't come up a day short of a meeting or something if we needed to do that.
Do you know when the Conservation meeting is?
August 1st.
Yeah, so that'll be good 60 days.
Okay, because I believe our next meeting in August is August 3rd, if I'm not mistaken.
Yep, and then, but just to be sure, because of PGB and the summer and everything, we might as well extend the 60 to protect?
I just want to extend it so it falls on a meeting date. That's what I was getting at.
Oh yeah.
So we don't, you know, end up with an odd day there.
Okay, well, let me look at the meeting dates. We have August 3rd, and then we have 14 would be...
17?
Yep, 17th, and then the first one, I need to look at the calendar for that one. And God, I do not want September to come. All right, hold on.
Going back quickly.
So September would be the 7th and the 21st. So the 60-day would cover three, four meetings.
Yeah, that's fine. I just want to make sure it leaves, it falls on a date, that's all.
Yeah.
So we're not scrambling, trying to call people to get extensions, you know, two days before a meeting.
Yeah, exactly. So we'll have to email that to the applicant, and so I'll make a motion that we continue the hearing for 359 Plymouth Street. Is the SP on here?
They're meeting the 1st, so anytime after the 14th.
When Conservation gets to it, then you might get it.
Yeah, we can put it on the agenda for the 14th and not hear it, just to have it on the agenda.
The 3rd?
Yeah.
Or the 17th?
17th, excuse me, yeah.
Okay, do you want to put it on for the 3rd, where there are August 1st, just in case?
Yeah, we could do that, because we can always just, you know...
Okay, so we'll extend, we'll move the hearing to August 3rd at 7:00 PM?
Continue the hearing.
2023, continue the hearing, sorry. And we'll need an extension of 60 days, which would bring us to, we got to double-check but either September 25th or October 1st. Okay.
Best we can do.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion, we have, it's been moved, we have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
Now, will you handle getting the continuation thing, or do we have Peggy send a letter or question?
I think we'll have Peggy.
Peggy will sign it out, and then you guys will get it back.
Get it over to you guys, and then you can...
Just want to have all the ayes dotted and the tees crossed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
PGB on stormwater and Conservation.
Yeah. Now, it was just time to get it back. I mean, CONCON's going to be important, because they could change, we don't know, yeah, we don't know what they're going to do.
Come in.
Oh, did we need to include something with the PGB in that?
Yes, well, do we need to on the motion, do we?
I don't think so, because if we don't get it, we can just postpone maybe.
Right. So, yeah, so Peggy will make sure that PGB has that. I'll even call them, I don't mind. Make sure that they have the correct one and get it to them, because you know what? In the morning, I will just go on Outlook and I'll send the package to PGB, and I'll just say, "Have you done this?" And I do have an extension. Is Peggy working tomorrow, or no?
I believe so.
Okay, so she, yeah.
All right, moving on.
Were hearing continued? Do we have to do a motion to continue the hearing for 0 and 314 Plymouth Street?
Yes. Are we going to get these, I think there's some confusion about these addresses, but yes.
Yeah, so the assessor does have two different, they are numbered correctly?
Yeah.
Or according to the subdivision?
314 and 318, I believe, are the addresses, but I have not confirmed that with the assessor. But for purposes of continuing the hearing, I think we use, because we've been carrying 0 and 314 the whole time.
Will we continue it to August, hold on, she has...
To the next meeting, and then give them time to get there.
Okay, well, I'll make a motion to continue the hearing for 0 and 314 Plymouth Street, site plan review, conditions of approval added for August 3rd at 7:00 PM, 2023.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
Okay.
All right.
Thanks, have a good night.
Moving on again. Discussions and actions to be taken. George's Rain, Ryder's Way, request for bond return. Highway Surveyor road approval requested. It appears that Steve got back from vacation and still has some questions. So I don't think we're ready.
100%.
I think we should put it off to the next meeting, and I'll entertain a motion to that effect.
I'll make a motion that we continue review of Ryder's Way.
Pending...
Yeah, pending the review from Highway Surveyor, and schedule it for our next meeting.
I'll second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you so much. Have a nice night.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
But in all this, you can see they have it laid out in here, there's a very small piece on assessor map, both of them. It's another piece of property, assessor maps.
Oh, it is. Map 6322, that is, lot. And that last name is Terrell?
Yeah, that's Phyllis.
Yeah, that's Phyllis.
But it's also, it's written on their line as well.
Yep, right here.
Yeah, Andrew Bird, this area here.
Oh, over there.
It's all the way up here. You can see the dotted lines that they didn't include in there.
Thank you.
Who's property is it?
Thanks, Mr. Burke.
Assessor map doesn't list anybody's name. Maybe it should be each, they may be different.
I thought it says Terrell.
It says Terrell, yeah.
It's Terrell. Because it goes...
Yeah, yeah.
See? And it's here too.
I mean, this is the lot, this is the lot right here.
She doesn't drive a lot here.
Yeah.
New Year, Men's of Here. It's a very small piece.
I don't, those don't look like lot lines to me, so I don't think those are lot lines.
Well, this is a lot line, right?
That's a lot line.
And then this dash line here is...
That may just be...
Elevation.
And/or a triangulation. But we can look into it.
Yeah.
The dotted line is, is labeled as replication setback.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, it's definitely not a lot line.
I appreciate it, I'll look into it, you know. Thanks, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
You've got good eyes there, Burke. It's a replication setback.
That's how it's labeled.
Yeah, it was definitely not a lot line. I'm positive of that.
Yeah, because it's the dock line, but when he first said it and I saw it, I was like, oh.
Would that come from?
Well, it's because it's angular, and you immediately think it's a lot.
I mean, I think you put the nail on the head. It is a fine line between, as long, you know, if they follow the bylaws and the rules, it's nice, I think it's great that they cooperated, tried the best they can, both with the town and the abutters, but again, how do we enforce it?
We shouldn't be discussing this because we've closed the hearing.
Yeah.
Okay. But it's just in general, you know, every piece of property, you know, when it comes down to...
No, I agree. This comes up all the time, and I'm dealing with it constantly. You know, everybody's met the conditions, met the bylaws. We've tried to accommodate everybody.
Right, neighbor doesn't like a fence, a six-foot fence, as opposed to, you know, whatever. It comes out...
Many times, it's a lighting issue.
Lighting issue, right.
Lighting is the big one.
Well, that does affect the other property, though.
Yeah, it affects the quality of life, absolutely.
Oh wow, Parkham Street's got...
Yeah, I didn't mean any specific...
No, no, it's okay, I just wanted, in case anybody's looking.
Yeah. Never know.
Signatures. Has everyone had an opportunity to look at the approval letter from 933 Plymouth Street?
I...
Magical years. Does anyone have a problem with anything on the approval letter?
I don't, but I will, I just thought of something right now. Should we say that we, to cover us in some way, shape, or form, that the fire department has approved these changes? Do you see what I mean?
Oh, this is the, yeah.
Yeah, the magi- yes. You know what I'm saying? Because it was a big part of it, right?
I don't know if that gets included on the decision letter. I don't know if that gets included on the, on the decision letter, because it really has to do strictly with the... Yeah, no, I...
Because of the fact that it is like such a change, and that it was all about getting in and out, and then there's that one part on, the one that's on the corner.
But they were incorporated onto the plan.
Okay.
I think that...
And we do have the letters, but I didn't know if it would be wise to mention it.
I think we're approving the plan. As long as they included everything on the plan, I think they're good.
Okay.
I don't think we have to be that specific.
It was just something that I thought I'd ask.
No, no, it's a good question, but I don't, I personally don't think we need to be that specific. Because they were incorporated into the plan, and that's the plan, so if they deviate from that plan, they are now a violation of the site plan.
It's a substantial change, exactly.
And then 167, 28H is, just so I wanna remind myself, because it's specified site plan review. Conveniences and safety of vehicle and pedestrian traffic, all right.
And, you know, I believe that was all covered on the plan, so... I mean, at any given moment, anybody can be in violation of anything, and then we deal with it separately, but, you know, the idea was to get the gates and move the play area, that was done. I believe they're good.
Okay, I'd make a motion to approve the letter to be signed as written.
Yeah, actually, if you don't mind, changing the motion to authorize the chair to sign.
Okay, authorize the chair to sign the letter as written for approval on Magical Years.
933 Plymouth Street.
933 Plymouth Street.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then, we don't have any minutes to discuss tonight. I think that she's probably making a few adjustments to those, so that'll be on next meeting, right?
Yes.
I don't think we have any bills.
There is some correspondence from the town of Middleborough and Brewhawater notifying us of some planning board hearings. Just for the sake of making note of the, I don't think there's anything we need to do anything about.
No, but I will say that 31 Parkin Street, after all these years, being raised is interesting.
Yes.
Right?
I did see that, yes. What else? No other business?
Making motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
I'll entertain that one, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous, we are adjourned, thank you.
Thank you.